Call this meeting to order. It's the Commissioner meeting of July 26, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Sussex County Administrative Center, the Commissioner Meeting Room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
You have a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Towards our public statement pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, BL 1975, add a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, BL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and Star Ledger. It is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Space? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. All right. Number six is proclamation, certificates, and presentations. We do have a proclamation that Commissioner Yardley will be presenting, right? Recognizing social workers and Grace Rabarredo.
Sorry. Yes, you're going to do it.
Go ahead, Yardley. Do we have the so- our social workers here? Do we have someone here from the union?
Yeah.
Well.
Summertime.
Social workers, they've done a lot of work for COVID. They were out there working in the field. They were working with patients. They were working with the public. They've done a lot of work and have a recognize and doing that work and work is really hard to do. This is a recognition by the entire board, okay? The whole board, there's somebody that's jacked up. We thought it was very important that there's an understanding and appreciation for work that the department does to reach this. Whereas, social workers are a dedicated group of professionals who are willing to improve and enhance the lives of communities in order to lead, basically, especially those that are considered most vulnerable. In addition, social workers work hard to advocate for those that may be physically, mentally, or emotionally unable to advocate for themselves. Whereas, social workers already work in some of the most challenging environments, maybe even more, maybe even more challenging by the COVID pandemic. Whereas, many social workers demonstrate courage, perseverance, leadership, compassion, and the need to provide services to the community, even at the risk to themselves, their families, and the pandemic. Whereas, the County of Sussex reckons contributions towards dedicated social workers in the determination to ensure the citizens of the county of Sussex receive uninterrupted assistance during the pandemic. Now, therefore, therefore, may it resolve that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioner Preparatory, all of the county's social workers, through the dedication to the County of Sussex during the COVID-19 pandemic, by order of the County Board of Commissioners, County Board of Commissioners, this Carney, Director, or Yardley Deputy, Ron Fantasia, Will Space, move into the meeting. Congratulations. And tell them, and let them know that we are all proud of you.
I will.
Say if you were.
Yes. On behalf of all the county's social workers, we do want to thank you for this proclamation. We do work continuously through all situations, including the COVID pandemic. Our APS social workers are always out in the field, no matter what. They're just there. They have to respond sometimes within 24 to 48 hours, and if it's an emergency, everything gets dropped and out they go, to make sure that our residents are safe. So Elizabeth takes, is the supervisor of APS social workers, who include Gigi, Amy, Alyssa, who's no longer with us, and Cameron. Our intake social workers include Kelly Kaye supervisor, which also include Bria, Ainsley, Lauren, Laura, Jessica, and Heather. There's one thing I do have to tell you literally of what we do. We are never bored. We do not get, we do get frustrated. We are always surrounded by challenges. There is so much to do with so little time. We will carry immense responsibility and very little authority. We will step into people's lives. We will make a difference. Some will bless us, some will curse us. We will see people at their worst and at their best. We will never cease to be amazed at people's capacity for love, courage, and endurance. We will see life begin, and we have seen life end. We will experience resounding triumphs and devastating failures. We have cried a lot, and we have laughed a lot. We know what it is to be human and to be humane. This is from an unimportant, but this is all the social workers to achieve. So we thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you so much. Our next is the NJAC Foundation 2023 AT&amp;T Scholarship Award, and Herb is going to present that, too.
We have a special guest.
Grace? And John, you want to come up? Grace, you want to come up?
And we have our president, one of our favorite people.
Grace, I'm going to.
This is the President of the NJAC Association of County Reporters, up here from Trent. That's the business award, so we take an extra. Ten seconds, Eric. Why don't you say something? Yeah, so the NJAC Foundation is part of the New Jersey Association of County, and we provide scholarship opportunities to hardworking students like Grace, who are county vocational technical school graduates who are continuing their education right here in the great state of New Jersey. So we're happy that you're standing here at home. And through the generosity of some great companies like AT&amp;T, and PSC, and about six or seven companies this year that provided us with grant funding, we give away 100% of the monies. This year alone, we're giving away over $90,000, again, this is to students of the law and 21k. So I just want to take a second to thank them, thank the board for a couple of seconds today. I appreciate it a great deal. And most importantly, congratulations to you, Grace, and to your family for like a terrific foundation for a great job.
Let me give a little information, so I don't have to tell you the grant of the fund, but we have, we have some information I think. This was a recommendation from my, I always get, yeah, I always, and this is something that wrote, when I think about Grace, I think of consistency, the ability to adapt. The transition to high school was seamless, as was her transition to and from virtual life. Many students struggled during this period of COVID. However, Grace continued to excel and adapt and change. Grace is truly a helping hand and could be relied on whenever needed. Grace is currently a member of our peer monitoring program, where she died and makes the children from junior, middle school. Grace was also chosen by the Sparta, in the Scorchery family, growth career, and did meet at Rutgers University. Grace loves to trouble shoot and problem solve. And when working in our CTE program, engineering program, Grace has extensive experience. Simmons and X?
Simmons.
Simmons?
Simmons and X.
What is that?
It's like a cat modeling software. It's similar to a mini-mole. I actually do that for a dog.
And mole?
That's a plastic injection.
Okay. Engineering provides one of the most vigorous horse loads at Sussex F. Grace has worked hard and maintained a GPA of 4.28 while managing, defining time for additional college courses, clubs, sports, and activities. Great. Did work.
That's a big GPA. I didn't have that GPA combined before.
So this is the 2023 Scholarship Program Awards. Grace Rabarredo?
Rabarredo.
Rabarredo, okay. In recognition for your dedication to academic excellence and distinguished scholastic achievement by John and I, and Yardley and the board, would you like to say something to this? Put you on the spot.
Yeah.
A future politician.
Um, I don't know if there's too much to say. I really just like, I don't know. I wasn't even expecting this, like, there. Um, I guess all is true. And I'm really excited to, I can see my next meeting in, I'm going to N J I T. Um, I'm really excited for that. And I'm hoping to stay in the good future of my time speaking, um, and to congratulate them.
Congratulations.
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 Hey, you got a picture of the three. You guys all want? That's all. Okay.
You don't have to stay either.
We'll see you soon, though. Just follow him.
Oh, and Grace.
Johnny, great night, John. You have to stay. Hey, John, thanks for coming.
Hey, thanks. Good to see you, man. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Bye.
All right. Number seven is public hearing. We have two, at least, as the final adoption of ordinance 26-06. At a regular meeting held on July 12, 2023, we introduce for a first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of July 19, 2023, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Amending speed limits established along County Route 613 under resolutions entitled "Establishing Speed Limits on Andover Mohawk Road in the Borough of Andover, Townships of Andover and Byram, and on East Shore Trail in the Township of Byram, dated May 27, 1975, and establishing speed limits along County Route 613 in the Township of Sparta dated April 24, 1996." Now, a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? All right. Saying none. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. All right. Now, I need a motion that this ordinance be fully adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. All right. I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance B. This is the final adoption, ordinance 2-23-07. At a regular meeting held on July 12, 2023, we introduce for the first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of July 19, 2023, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Memorizing mid-block crosswalks on Sussex County Route 613 within the townships of Byram and Sparta. A motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden? Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. Is there anyone to be heard regarding this? All right. Saying none. Can I get a motion that this public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. All right. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be fully adopted?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. All right. I will move that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. I have a second.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Saying none. Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up with a microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. A motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. Is there anyone in the public that has anything on the agenda? You want to come up? If you want to give your phone, that's all you do. Just state your name, please, and municipality, and maybe who you're for.
With Horizon, with Cross and with Shield. So just to give you an update on what's going on with the HSA administration. So Ron, I'd sent you the, you know, email a couple of weeks ago. There are about $131,000 worth of claims that need to be adjusted. So further, it's going to start that next week. That'll be about 850 claims, or 870 claims, excuse me. So it's going to take about 15 business days. So roughly by the middle to, you know, right apart, August, that'll all be completed. What's going to happen is, and I'll have Eric send LP and email, because she's going to see all these transactions coming through on the statements, okay? And that's how all the credits will be credited back to the County of Sussex. Unfortunately, you know, I was hoping we could just wire transfer $131,000, but they have to adjust all the accounts of each individual member, okay? Then after that, we're in Horizon, obviously, we're on the hook for recapping of the money. So luckily, of the $131,000, only 3,000 are related to subscribers. Most of it's from the provider. So I would anticipate very little member outreach. We have a threshold, and we'll try and recap. So it's still going to be from the provider, but very little member impact, okay?
I can say from the administration side of it, the, I forget the one-on-one call line that was put in.
The advocate line?
The advocate line, and Eric has been extremely responsive. We've gotten very good response on any issues that we have. Ray, I don't know if you've heard anything different, but I've been dealing with Debbie here the last couple of weeks, and it's been a night-and-day difference of the turnaround of response and taking care of the issues that have come up. And quite frankly, they've gone down, too. So I think we've got ahead of this, but the process, what we got in place, we know if we do have an issue, we can react to it. So we do appreciate that.
My apologies, I've been here for so long, unfortunately, but, you know, we're getting to the right place. Still have a few other milestones to get out, so we have the renewal, that's due September 1st. We have the reporting on the high-level claim, that's how the member outreach is going, but that coupled with the advocate line, I think, will also result in a report.
Is there any questions that the board has before we, Mr. Burko?
No, I'm pleased with the empty.
Yeah. And we'll take the 131,000 and $1,000 checks. We can deposit. Don't worry. I don't care how you do it.
I wish we could have just wired it. It'd be a lot easier, but unfortunately, we're going to have to make.
We'll take care of it, as long as it's.
I'll have Eric reach out help if he's going to have to walk through what it sounds like on the state that comes. It is going to be expected to be a seventy, like, current, that I have to do.
We'll cash them.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else before we close the floor? No? All right. Motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
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 Commissioner Hayden? All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Stain carries. Right. Number nine, any comments? Commissioner Hayden, want to start us off?
Sure. East Louise Childs Branch of the Sussex County Library since, to temporarily close for construction July 31 to August 19, Stand Up New Jersey Sussex County Library System announces an upcoming construction project for the East Louise Childs Branch in Stand Up New Jersey to replace the roof and upgrade the septic system. The branch will close Monday, July 31. It's expected to reopen its doors to the public Monday, August 21, 2023. Book drops located at the branch and at the Backon Municipal Building, 111 River Sticks Road at Backon, will remain open during the construction and be emptied daily. Patrons now standing hold requests to be contacted to arrange an alternate pickup location or to extend their holds until the branch reopens. Several library events, including Storytime and Miss Dorenda, will be offered virtually during this time. Sussex County Library System apologizes for any inconvenience caused by this temporary closure and asks for the community's understanding and patience during this period. Community members are encouraged to utilize the services and resources available at one of the five nearby Sussex County Library Branch services, including Dennis Branch, 101 Main Street Newton, Franklin Branch, 101, 103 Main Street Franklin. Library cardholders can still access the Sussex County Library's extensive digital collection, including ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, and more, through the library's website and digital platform. Please visit the Sussex County website for more information. Also, the fair, August 4 through the 12th. On Friday, it is open 5 to 10. During the week, Monday through Friday, it is 12 to 10, and on weekends, 10 to 10. I encourage everybody to go to our fair. It's a big event. That's it.
Just a quick question. You said the Frankfurt Library was closed because of the rule of the stuff there?
No.
I thought, I just heard that.
No, 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 no. Stand Up.
Stand Up.
Stand Up.
Okay, okay.
No, Frankfurt, no, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Space?
Okay. The New Jersey State Fair, which Bill just said the dates. The Division of Health, Senior Services, Social Services, Community and Youth Services and Transit will be represented in the county building at the New Jersey State Fair. Booth displays and special events will be provided to benefit Sussex County residents. Skyland's Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Individuals in need can call 973-579-0480. Senior Day at the Fair will be held on Thursday, August 10, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, under the Planet Networks Performing Arts Tent at the fairgrounds. The theme this year is Mardi Gras. Seniors will enjoy visiting numerous vendors to obtain important information about services while enjoying refreshments, store prizes, and listening to music from Mardi Gras. The Senior of the Year presentation will take place at 1:00 PM, which recognizes seniors in Sussex County who have been nominated for their accomplishments and outstanding service to their community. Transit Safety Awards will also be presented to Skyland's Ride omnibus operators in recognition of their safe driving and the number of years they have been accident-free. Children's Day will take place on Tuesday, August 8, from 12 until 3, under the Planet Networks Performing Arts Tent. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, the Office of Public Health Nursing will promote the services available through Special Child Health Services and provide education about son's safety and lives. Division of Community and Youth Services and Detention Alternative Staff will share important information with the public by hosting a fun, interactive, here's-the-scoop trivia activity. Prizes will be given to the winners, including a random distribution of ice cream vouchers. Staff will be providing parents and guardians with information about programs and services. And I have one more thing. I attended last week the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, NJBPU, Office of Broadband Connectivity, which held a local listening event at the main branch of the Sussex County Library to speak with interested community members about high-speed internet access needs in unserved and underserved populations. Input from these sessions will help guide the state's Digital Equity Five-Year Action Plan and broadband program development. Many places in Sussex County have internet speeds as low as 25x3 Mbps, which is atrocious in this day and age. There were representatives there from the Office of Broadband Connectivity, Verizon, Optimum. Also on the panel was Robert Boyle of Planet Networks, Bob Spear, who is the president of IBW Local 827, who represents workers in the cable, internet, phone industries. New Jersey has to submit a plan to the federal government on how to spend $263 million in federal dollars for investing in broadband by the end of the year. One important thing Sussex County residents and business owners can do is go to www nj.gov/bpu, backslash about, backslash divisions, backslash broadband, and in the middle of the page, take the New Jersey State Broadband Survey. They are trying to get as much accurate information as possible to where there are lapses in high-speed internet. Robert from Planet Networks said they are investing in the county. Bob from the IBW believes that company the size of Verizon should be looking to expand infrastructure here because they have the means to absorb the startup costs of building the infrastructure. What is frustrating to me is people, business owners, our kids have to live in the now. We have to work in the now, go to school in the now, et cetera. Getting high-speed internet in the future is great, but our kids in high school need it now.
Thank you. Commissioner Fantasia?
Normally, I start with the County Health Department, but I'm going to stay on the BPU train because it's appropriate. Last meeting, I shared with the public that BPU was holding a hearing, and that hearing was today, regarding the plan under Governor Murphy to scrap gas-powered stoves and water heaters, among other appliances. It was a special session hosted by Governor Murphy's controlled entity, and please keep in mind that he did remove two members of that board who were not in agreement with him for this initiative before today. I'm going to quote Safe Jersey for just a moment here. This was written just, just prior to our meeting. As one might expect, this radical initiative is less than transparent. Cloaking their goal in deceptive language and procedural mechanics, the board included, quote, "building decarbonization program measures," buried in the adopted order. The relevant section of this order lays the groundwork for New Jersey to bar the sale and installation of appliances on both commercial and residential properties, which failed to comply with radical and extreme new electrification standards. So in plain speak, these new regulations, Governor Murphy is trying to use the BPU to enact this plan, this unrealistic and anti-consumer energy mandate, basically to force New Jersey families to give up your gas stove, force New Jersey families to retrofit their heating systems. So if you have a fossil fuel system or natural gas, you would be forced to convert that to electric at your own expense. Ban the sale of gas-powered cars in New Jersey by 2035. So that's just in 11, 12 years here. It will cost the residential taxpayers and business owners hundreds of billions of dollars, and it circumvents the will of the people and the legislature. So at this point, the legal fight continues because the BPU has zero legal authority to enact such measures on any of us or any of our businesses. So that's, that just happened today, this sham of a hearing. Secondarily, for our Second Amendment defenders up here, and we have a multitude of legal gun owners up here in Sussex County, the Association of New Jersey Rifle and Pistol Clubs today have taken initial steps to overturn the New Jersey State Police Training requirements that were just issued last week regarding concealed carry training requirements. These requirements absurdly compel ordinary citizens to meet the same training requirements as members of law enforcement in order to obtain a carry permit. Requiring average citizens to meet police-level training requirements is being mandated purely to make it much harder for the average citizen to qualify to obtain a carry permit in the first place. Additionally, many of those requirements relate solely to law enforcement functions, having nothing to do with the exercise of self-defense by an average citizen. ANJ or RPC Council, Dan Schmutter, has asked the lower federal court in the carry killer lawsuit to reopen the case to assert new claims to overturn these new training regulations. So we'll keep you posted on that. You have something additional?
Yeah, because with the carry regulations, now that you have to qualify as a police officer almost, that should take away the dangerous places, the list of places you're that should take away the dangerous places, the list of places you're not allowed to carry. Because if you have the same training, I mean, I know what I was trained, so I don't know if they're going to have everybody trained the same. You could take it anywhere.
They would not take that. You and I both know that, yes.
I know.
I also have a question. But what's the cost for the training?
Did you just go?
I just went. It cost me, it goes anywhere.
Yeah, but you, you took the older style. You didn't take the new ones. You probably paid one fifty, correct?
No, no, actually, I paid three fifty, but it ranges anywhere from what I've seen, from two forty to three hundred.
Yeah, it's going to go up now because you're going to be mandated to do a whole bunch of maneuvers and manipulations with the one.
I literally just took it two weeks ago. So now I got to do it again?
Uh, probably. You probably didn't make the cutoff.
I don't think so.
There's, there's all kinds of different opinions on what the cutoff is. Nobody knows.
I don't know. Me personally, I'd make you take it again.
Make twice.
Wow.
All right, anyway.
The new training.
Appreciate that.
So moving away from the agenda that the state of New Jersey is giving us, let's talk about something very specific to the county. Vaccinations, as usual. Sussex County Division of Health is offering COVID- nineteen vaccination. If you are interested, on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from two to four PM, the Office of Public Health Nursing on Wietsworth Road in Hamburg. Appointments are required, and you can make a phone call to schedule that. Five seven nine zero five seven zero. Public Health Nursing will continue to provide weekly homebound vaccinations if requested. The Office of Mosquito Control, that seems to be a very, very hot topic, mosquito-borne disease surveillance. Total of four hundred and thirty-four pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for mosquito-borne disease testing. All are negative, but please check the mosquito control disease surveillance website for the most up-to-date results because these results come in daily. In the state of New Jersey, as of today, thirty-one pools of West Nile virus have tested positive in nine counties. So a lot of us work outside of the county and travel and visit, so please be careful. Please protect, protect yourselves. The Office of Mosquito Control completed a fifth aerial application on July nineteenth. This means that the office has treated close to twenty-three thousand acres arially so far for the twenty twenty-three season, and they're going to continue to treat if the county continues to receive significant rainfall. The office has completed four ULV truck-mounted spraying applications in areas with high vector populations. Please check the spray schedule on the mosquito website for updates and details regarding the routes. And also, Ron, can that be posted on our website?
Absolutely.
And our social media, you know, when the spraying happens? Because I know it's a concern, and there's a bit of confusion whether they're, you know, doing larvicide, whether they're spraying for adult mosquitoes, et cetera. And I know some people have certain situations where they request to not have spraying near their home or property.
Commissioner, I just want to interrupt you on that note. Is there any way that we have any money to put that on the radio ad, WSUS or something, to put that out as well? Is there anything we can do with?
Um, I'll look into it.
Know what I mean? Just to keep throwing out there? Because you're a hundred percent right. Even when I did it in Frankfurt, and the Frankfurt mayor's here to get tested, um, they, oh my God, they're spraying, and there's, there's planes flying over. So they, people get really nervous.
When you're driving on Spring Valley Road even, I know I've gone up and down that road, and I see that someone spray painted a sign that said, "No spray, please," and just has it out all the time near their farm so that people see that.
That's the, that's the vehicle, when the vehicle comes down the road.
They, they don't want this right there. So anyhow, get rid of the standing water found in and around your home, please. And if you are experiencing an increase in mosquito activity, you can call the office to alert the staff, and they may be able to come out and provide a visit to your home and property. Okay, so New Jersey State Fair, Sussex County Fairgrounds. Green Day will take place on Monday, August seventh, from twelve to four, under the Planet Networks Performing Arts Tent. And the Office of Mosquito Control will be there to educate residents about mosquito biology and the practices that we do in Sussex County. And also, they will have mosquito-eating fish there, so you can see them in action. Children's Day takes place on Tuesday, August eighth, from twelve to three, under the Planet Networks Performing Arts Tent. And the Office of Mosquito Control will be there to talk to children. They're doing a children's program about mosquito biology and fish control methods through the hands-on activity of dipping for mosquito larvae from a kiddie pool and feeding mosquito fish mosquito larvae. Yeah, it reminds me of sea monkeys. Remember when we were kids? That's what I swear it looks like. In the event of questions pertaining to these mosquito practices, here's some additional information that the office asked me to share tonight. Professionals from local government departments or mosquito-controlled districts develop mosquito control plans by using an integrated vector management approach. So it's to both control nuisance mosquitoes and also mosquitoes that spread viruses like dengue fever, West Nile, Zika, and others. So basically, it's to try to control it before we start seeing those diseases present in our environment. So they do surveillance, source reduction, control all mosquito life stages, insecticide, resistance testing, public education, community involvement, and evaluation of actions taken. And I must say that I'd much prefer talking about mosquitoes than COVID- nineteen. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director Yardley.
Thank you. Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program is a program for seniors aged sixty and older with a one-time fifty-dollar electronic benefit in the form of a QR code. It's a card to purchase local fresh, local and fresh vegetables at participating stands in New Jersey. This benefit will be available from June first through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty-three. Must be redeemed by November thirtieth this year. The senior services visited various senior housing nutrition sites during the month of July to distribute the electronic benefits. As of July seventeenth, the division has distributed hundred and thirty benefits for seniors, Farmer Markets Nutrition Program. So, and it all went to Sussex County seniors. Environmental health inspections. The Division of Health conducted six hundred and sixty-five inspections from January through June, consisting of five hundred and sixty-five food inspections, fifty-seven recreational bathing facilities. Just so everyone knows, the recreational, the camps and all of the camps, the, any pools, other pools and beaches, they all have to be inspected by the health department. Twenty-three animal facilities, one campground, three body art facilities, six tanning facilities, ten youth camps. They had two hundred and twenty-two temporary food plan reviews. Those are seasonal. Those are things that come into the county seasonal, and come winter, they're not here. And thirty-eight fixed food plan reviews. That's a good sign because that means we're getting more people opening food businesses throughout the county. So that's really good, good news. Rabies. From June first through June thirtieth, there were twenty-three. So in what, this is for the month of June. Hundred and one domestic or hand animal bites reported. There were forty-two from dogs, cats were eight, bats were fifteen, raccoons four, groundhogs five, skunk one. I don't know how you got close enough to get by that skunk. Two unknown. Sixteen animals were sent for testing for rabies. One tested positive, a raccoon in Vernon. Nineteen people received P E P treatment, and that is the rabies treatment. Because you, some of them, some of the bites, they weren't unable to capture the animals. And you can get additional information on rabies by selecting Rabies tab on the Division of Health page of Sussex County, at the Sussex County website. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. And I'll be brief. We started the removal of dead disease and stressed ash trees along county right-ofways. Contractor was Midhurst, so if you see Midhurst around, they're cutting down trees. This was ARPA-funded. The thirteen segments of road will be completed at this time. The budget for this contractor was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. JCPNL also allocated a couple of years ago millions of dollars to do the same. As everybody knows, they've been, the ash trees have been violated by a beetle, and they need to be taken down. These roads, how redo the county routes, just to be quick. Our county Route five fifteen, five seventeen, five nineteen, five sixty-five, six thirteen, six twenty-seven, six thirty, six fifty, six fifty-five, not in that particular quarter. So if you see them on the side of the roads, that's what they are doing.
Commissioner, can I ask you a question about that?
Sure thing.
Are any of those trees related to the fact, like, we're hearing, you know, a ton of complaints about storms and, you know, losing electric every, you know, consistently, at least in my neck of the county? Are any of these trees responsible for that, the ash trees that are coming down?
Absolutely. So what they do, they get hollowed out, and then they have no, nothing to hold them up. So then we get the washouts like we've had lately, and then the wind that's coming down there easily taking them down, yeah. So.
It's very unusual, the level of times the power is going out this summer comparatively.
Yeah, and again, I know I refer to Frankfurt a lot just because I spent some time there. I know they allocated some money, at least when I was there, and I think they still did this year or last year, to cut their own trees down. So everybody puts a little in, and hopefully we could fix that. Well, I mean, we were out, Sandy came, it was five days for me, and I know a lot of people are worse than that, so. Trying to get ahead of it. DPW is also clearing the side of the road. Some of these operations include shoulder maintenance, getting ready for pavement. If you see where we started our pavement program, I actually saw it today. I was working in Vernon on five sixty-five, right by Franklin Sussex. They're repaving that. River View paving has a contract, as I mentioned at our last meeting. They're doing a very good job, which I'm happy to see, and it's coming along nice. OEM is back in their office, so they're out of their trailers, they're very happy. I want to thank actually the sheriff's office in OEM. We had a lot of volunteers. They painted the majority of the OEM building. So that was, uh, that was really nice. Didn't have to do that. The cost was eighty-five thousand dollars to paint that building. And they knocked out a lot of it on their own time. Getting dirty, something, I don't like to do paint. It's not fun, right? It's monotonous and kind of boring, so. Kudos to the sheriff's office, who did participate. It was very good. Saturday, I attended, as you guys, as the commissioners know, there was a food pantry, Sussex County Food Pantry Fund Drive, but not associated with the county, which, again, was a little odd to me. I did not get to speak to the woman who runs it. I do appreciate the help, right? Because we could always use money at the Sussex County Food Pantry. I was there, it was a pretty good turnout. I'm not sure what they raised, but I appreciate that as well. Hopefully next year they'll let us know, and we can put that out and let everybody know and maybe get some more people there. Last Friday, we had a facilities meeting. I, Ron, Elka, Christina, Lorraine, we had the Board of Elections there, Hillary from the sheriff's office. We went over to facilities, just to see where everybody is, and Keith as well. Keith's a big part. So we went over the new building for the sheriff's office. We're coming up with a name to call that instead of the Corrections Office. We told them we put that in their hands. We are thinking, April, we're hoping for him to be in that office. That's, that's the push that we're looking at right now. That's, that's our goal set. So we'll see what happens. They figured out pretty much everything, what they need in that building, so that went well. We're still working on some other things for the Board of Elections. Obviously, we updated them on where we were at monetarily and, you know, some plans. So we're still waiting on some information, as you all know. So it was a very good meeting, and we were able to come up with some other ideas. It was a good facilities meeting, so we were able to bounce things off each other that I particularly didn't know what we could do. There's a lot of space that we rent at that Cochran Building that we could eliminate and save a lot of, a lot of taxpayer money. And that's kind of the direction that we're looking to go in. So I'll keep you abreast of that. And that's, that's all I have for now. All right, moving on. It's number ten, approval of consent agenda, there is none. Eleven, approval minutes. This is from the regular meeting on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ayes. Number twelve, appointments and or resignations, there are none. Thirteen's our resolutions. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through O.
So moved.
Second.
Fantasia, have a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number fourteen, awards of contracts, change orders, and bid. We have one. This resolution is authorizing change order number one to the contract between the County of Sussex, Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety, and Grimco Incorporated for the purchase of one automatic sign-cutting table in the addition amount of two thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and seven cents, funded by American Rescue Plan Act for ARPA, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, C S L F R F, assistance listing hashtag twenty-one point zero two seven. This is just an addition of the signed purchaser. Again, as you guys know, we make a lot of signs in-house. We also have shared services with the other municipal values, which expedites things. Somebody loses into a stop sign, or someone and so forth, yield and all that stuff. So it's definitely nice to have. So this was just an amendment. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award, Contract Change Orders Bid, consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. Motion to adoption, to adopt Resolution A?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Fifteen's financials. We have two bills list. The first is Resolution A, it's the payment of Bills List A on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion to pay the Bills List A.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Next is a payment of Bills List B. This is from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the Bills List B.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstained.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Sixteen, this personnel, it was long personnel, if everybody read it. Just so you know, this is the personnel agenda of seven, seven twenty-six, twenty-three. I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Got a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden? Sorry. Any discussion?
Yes. Voting no wasn't in on time. This came in late. I got it late. When, when was it sent out, the agenda?
Should have been with the, um.
I had it a while ago. I had it in my email.
I looked it over, it was long.
It was in the agenda packet.
Yeah.
It was very long. You want to take a minute, Commissioner?
I'm going to vote no, no, but I just wanted to look up. I'll.
All right, so we'll continue then.
Good.
I'm sorry, did we get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Yes.
We did. Have a second.
Just, have a second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? That's right, I'm sorry. That was our discussion. Any other discussion? All right, roll call then.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
No.
All right. Seventeen, administrative report.
Commissioner Director, I don't have a whole lot more to add. OEM's up and going. They, we weren't able to put the air conditioning up. One of the parts didn't come in, so that'll go in in September, the rooftop, the new rooftop, so we have that planned. The only other thing I have is I hope everybody appreciates that the air conditioner came on today. I'm saying it's working. I'm not saying it's fixed. It's working today, so keep our fingers crossed. My, this is the first time my office has been cooler than eighty-five degrees in the last couple of weeks. So this has been a welcomed, a very welcomed approach.
Ron, you still have the monster in the hallway, it's just a case.
I did that on purpose. They turned it on this morning. I said, "Do not move that at all, because if it doesn't work, I got to cool this room down again," so.
Now, is this the, the new motor compressor?
Yep.
And they were able to find one that they couldn't, that was going to take a year?
When you put certain, um, legal push on companies that don't want to move so fast, they move a little faster, and we got it. So hopefully this one lasts longer than the last one that was in here. That's my only prayer right now. They had to build the thing. They don't make them anymore. This, this unit is twenty-five years old. So you just can't go and pick those out anywhere. So it's working today.
Good. Got that all?
That's it.
All right. County Council.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Nineteen, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, as our last meeting, I was to send out a resolution for everyone's review. It had to get, go through legal twice through Doug Steinhardt. I know Katie, I don't think, I don't think you looked at it. I think it was Doug the second time, so that's why it did not make it for the deadline. But Christina has it today.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask that she electronically send it to the board and for it to be included on next meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else for unfinished? Number twenty's new business. Anybody?
Just a reminder to everybody that the fair, the county building is going to feature lots of county offices in there, including the commissioner offices, so it's a chance for the public to come out and see what everyone does in person, or provide questions, comments, information. You'll be able to see people in person.
This is three minutes or less.
Three minutes or less.
And, and this is the first time you're.
Second, second year for doing it.[1790.14]
No. You're handling it for the first time this year, correct?
For the?
The commissioners.
No, I did it last year as well.
You did do last year. Okay. All right. Give you, give you the pass.
All right. Moving on, 21 is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at a microphone, state your name, and this is probably for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, staying, carries.